Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 23rd School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting and Public Hearing. Thank you all for joining us. I want to start the meeting off as usual with our reading of the District Vision by Ms. Foreman, and then introduction of the invocation as well.
The School District of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And I'd like to introduce this evening Ms. Gary Crawford, who is one of our community's religious leaders. He's CEO and former, formed the King Station and the Galatians, and he's also SAC member over at Lee Middle. So we truly appreciate you being here. Thank you.
If you all will please stand, and after the invocation, we will have the color guard and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before I pray, I'd like to acknowledge the Passover celebration now underway in its purpose and benefit for all mankind. The celebration is in remembrance of the Jewish Exodus from Egypt, when the angel of death passed over all the Jews, the firstborn of the Jews, who put the sacrifice lamb's blood on their doorpost as instructed by faith. This commemorative event was not only a blessing to the Jews at the time, it foreshadows a greater event that benefits all of us. You see, when mankind, before there was Jew or Gentile, was let out of the Garden of Eden due to our sin, God has been demonstrating that there is no remission of sin without the shedding of blood which necessitated the sacrifice. From the first sacrifice of Abel to God's command to Abraham, 2,000 years later, to sacrifice Isaac on Mount Moriah, a test of his love for God, which God stopped and told Abraham he would provide the lamb. 2,000 years later, on that same Mount Moriah, he fulfilled that promise, as John the Baptist declared, behold, the Lamb of God who takes away the sin of the world. And for all those who place their faith in his work, he becomes the Passover lamb once and forever, from what is coming, like the Jews were protected at the first Passover. And now, 2,000 years from Jesus' sacrifice to today, we see another promise in the Scripture fulfilled, as a restoration of Israel as a nation would occur prior to the Lord's return and the establishment of his visible kingdom on the earth. As a result of Jesus' work, God also gave us permission to enter into his throne room of God for our prayers. So in the name of your son, Jesus, Father, I open this session with this prayer. For the students, that the destiny you placed in them before their birth would be awakened at an early age, and the education needed to complete it would be grasped at the earliest possible time by them. Also, that nothing to this, nothing contrary to this would be allowed to rob them of their destiny. For the parents and faculty, that they be gifted with all manner of wisdom and patience from heaven to educate, encourage, and nurture these students in righteousness toward their destiny. For the administration, that they would have heavenly wisdom and discernment in every matter they face, so that righteousness would rise over every school in Manatee County. And for the board, that they will have every resource, including truth, grace, patience, wisdom, they need to serve the students, parents, faculty, and administration to accomplish their respective efforts and callings in support of righteousness in the Manatee County educational system. Father, I pray it is your good pleasure to hear these prayers, in the name of the soon incoming king. Amen.
Please stand as we welcome in the Palmetto High School Color Guard.
March. Mark time, march. Colors, hold. Present, colors.
During the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Center, face. Forward, march.
You may be seated. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. We do have the chair's on good cause to amend the agenda and include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on April 23rd, 2024 Agenda, updated April 19th, 2023, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I do have one thought for the board. If we can change some things around and move public comment in front of the consent items, so move it from 13 to 11. If that is okay with the rest of the board?
That's fine. Sure.
Okay. So with that adjustment, do we have a motion to accept that amendment?
No, ma'am.
Perfect.
A second.
Perfect. All right. We'll just, we'll do it manually. All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passes five to zero. And now the actual approval of the agenda with the amended agenda that we just approved, we could do it on Granicus, or I legislate, whatever we want to call it. Passes five to zero. Approval of the minutes, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you. Good evening, chairman and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop held on March 1st, 2024, the School Board Meeting held on March 19th, 2024, and the special meeting held on March 21st, 2024.
Sound moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any corrections on any minutes? Seeing none?
It looks as though my screen is frozen.
Mine too.
Yeah, mine too. Let's go ahead and vote. Our, yeah, our legislate is frozen.
Yay, technology.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the superintendent, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. No pose, passes five to zero. Ms. Spray, I think, made the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Messenger seconded?
Ms. Messenger made the motion.
I think I made the motion.
She made the motion, Tatum seconded.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was way off.
Do we want to reset?
Should we, yeah.
Yeah, well, as we're, yeah, go ahead and, you can go ahead and close it. We're going to recognitions now, so we have time to turn that off and turn it back on. So Mr. Barber, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and Superintendent Weisong. We've got a big group coming on up here. If y'all said be right here in the center, and y'all could maybe Monica, maybe you and your friend over here. Wendell, you? Okay. I don't want to brag, but I think we're going right past good news tonight and going to great news. We have two really tremendous recognitions, and this is really, I think, a milestone, milestone moment for the school district. So to get us started, I'd like to introduce the district's Advanced Studies Coordinator, Erin Cox. So Erin.
Good evening. I am Erin Cox. I'm the Advanced Studies Coordinator for the district, and that means that I have the privilege of basically administering the Cambridge ACE program for our K-12 schools. So tonight, we have two representatives from Cambridge here, Mr. Jeremy Riggio and Mr. Don Myers. They're going to speak a little bit about our district's history with the Cambridge Program and about the wonderful award that we've earned.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Superintendent Weisong, Board Chair Choat, rest of the board members, thank you so much for having us today. We're really excited to announce that Manatee County has been chosen as one of our Districts of the Year. Each year, we honor three districts throughout the country in the small, medium, and large category, and you guys have been chosen as this year's winner in the medium category for District of the Year. We base that award each year based on giving students access to rigorous and relevant curriculum. So you guys have done a lot. Jeremy's going to talk briefly about some of the work that you've done to expand access to more students. Secondly, we look for continued excellence. As you know, as you increase the number of students doing anything, it's hard to keep scores high. More students taking it means that it's more difficult to have that high level of excellence, but it hasn't been difficult for you, thanks in part to these teachers, these administrators, and the students. They have continued to excel academically, setting very high passing marks on the Cambridge exams, which are worldwide exams. During the little session before, Board Member Tatum, we were talking about a student that won the award for the highest score in the world on one of the exams. So you guys have exhibited excellence continually, and we're very proud to name you our winner this year. I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy to talk to you a little bit more specifically about, because he works most directly with your schools, about what's been happening.
Thanks, Jeremy. Yeah, so to Don's point, I get the pleasure of working with your schools directly. I work often with Monica, Jen, Carrie, Allison is back there somewhere, and Bayshore, and a number of high schools that I don't think are here, and you have some wonderful people there. And our goal is always, we want to partner with a school, whatever their vision is, whatever that district's vision is, we try to blend that with Cambridge. Where can we meet as a happy medium and do that? And so I don't want to bog us down with too much data, but just to share some numbers for the context of winning the award for Medium District of the Year. So we have ASNA levels, AS level exams, our college credit exams that your schools are offering. In June of '22, you had five schools offering roughly 1,500 exams that school year. So you fast forward now to June of '23, which is basically what the award's for, three schools came on board, now we're up to eight schools, and we jumped to 2,339 exams, right? Pass rates, 77% in that June '22, 69% in that June '23. So to Don's point, that's a pretty remarkable job, because you would expect some sort of corollary relationship between a jump in entries of 30% that results might come down. But what Manatee County has done, largely through the work of the schools, through the support of Erin, is manage those, that growth with consistent results. The catalyst for the growth is largely in English General Paper, right, which all of your high schools offer English General Paper as an exam. To give you an idea, so this year, you'll have about 2,875 individual candidates take a Cambridge exam. That's roughly 18% of your advanced student population, right? Large urban district, Cambridge District, South Florida, 7% penetration. You're giving students every year, 20% of your students roughly every year are getting access to Cambridge courses. That's a pretty big deal. That's exposure. That's a commitment to equity and doing what's best for all kids in the district, not a population of kids in the district. The big thing is the ACE diploma. We've seen ACE diploma entries grow in Manatee County for the last three years, 140 entries this year. If you're not familiar, the ACE diploma is tied to Bright Futures. Obviously, the end, the idea is demonstrate excellence over a broad and balanced curriculum, earn Bright Futures, right? If 140 students in Manatee County get the ACE diploma and earn Bright Futures that way, and we know that the SAT and ACT, those scores are hard, they're well above the national average. Students aren't going to hit those necessarily easy. At $32,000 a year, you're talking for, for 140 kids, a 4.5 million? Don't, I was in, I was English History, not math. But I think I'm in the ballpark, right? So $4.5 million, right, in scholarships in just Manatee County. That's a pretty big deal, right? And then you take past exams, 2,000-plus past exams, $50 apiece for teachers who are preparing those students for those exams, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars of teacher bonus, in a career that does not exactly give away money as bonuses to teachers, right? So all of those things, so many reciprocal benefits, then we could get into college credits and all these things. But just some numbers to share, what you're doing is really impressive, and this award is earned, right? It's not a given thing, it's actually earned, and really nice job, and congrats to all of Manatee County.
Thank you. We really couldn't invite everybody tonight, but we wanted to invite our two Cambridge High Schools, and we have Principal Monica DeLestline from Palmetto High. You want to introduce the, your team members there?
Sure. I have our ACE coordinators and also ACE teachers as well, Ms. Carrie McMillan and Ms. Jen Little.
Okay. And then Wendell Butler. Wendell Butler from.
Good evening. Wendell Butler, I have with me my Assistant Principal, Dr. Carlson. She handles all of the scheduling regarding ACE. And my other Assistant Principal, Allison Galashy, was here with us, but she had to leave to pick up her child, and she's the one that supervises and facilitates, making sure that ACE is working on our campus.
Okay, so what we'd like, tremendous, tremendous award. What we'd like to do now is have y'all present it to the two principals. And I will get a photo. If y'all want.
Which way do you want us to stand?
Wendell, why don't you get on this side? I'll stand over here to the side. If I'm in it, I'm great.
There we go. Thanks.
Now, we're going to get a picture of all of y'all up front with the school board in the background, okay? So if y'all could just turn around and face the audience.
I have to do it.
All scribbles.
See how adults struggle with following directions?
Okay. Right. One, two, three. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for the reception, Ted.
Okay, well, I'm going to lead that up to the superintendent for this school.
A little tug of war going on here.
He's eating chicken nuggets. He's eating chicken nuggets. All right, which of y'all would like to come on now? Chicken nuggets.
Oh, good for her.
McDonald's. I think y'all are really going to enjoy this next, really, it's a student celebration. And on Tuesday, March 5th, Dr. Weisong held his very first Superintendent's Student Leadership Forum at Southeast High School, and the forum gave the superintendent and other district and community leaders a chance to listen and learn from more than 40 student leaders from the Manatee District, seven high schools. We invited representatives from each of our high schools to be here today to convey a little bit about what that experience was like for them. So what I'm going to do, first of all, is I'm going to ask each of the representatives of the high schools to step up and introduce themselves to you.
Hi, I'm Abby Height, and I'm from Southeast High School. I am on the high school swim team. I am the Secretary of Technology Student Association, and I'm a part of National Honor Society.
Hi, my name's Nivea Ortiz. I go to Bayshore High School. I'm part of AVID, National Honor Society, dual enrollment, and student government, and I played volleyball for one semester.
Hello, my name is Deja Bradley. I attend Palmetto High School. I am an ACE ambassador. I'm in the AVID Club, and I'm also in Student Government Association.
My name's Carson. The two biggest things in school are student government and National Honor Society, and I'm in my 10th year of Taekwondo.
Black belt, right?
Second degree.
Second degree.
Good evening. My name is Toniann Arnold. I am from Braden River High School. I am a part of the National Honor Society. I'm also a part of the Senior Advisory Board, and I am also a member of the Journalism Club.
Hello, my name is Chad Cohen. I'm a member of National Honor Society, and I'm just finishing up my term as the Florida District Webmaster of Key Club International. I serve over 350 schools across Florida, the Cayman Islands, and the Turks and Caicos, and currently, I'm a senior at Manatee High.
Hello, my name is Jack Davis. I am a senior at Parish Community High School. I represent JIRA TC. I'm the executive officer there, as well as the AP Capstone Program at Parish and the National Honor Society. Thank you.
We also have a video, a short video, it's like a minute and a half, that was taken that day, so we want to show you a little bit, so you get a flavor of how the event went.
This is Brianna. She's from Manatee High, and she is the president of HOSA and National Honor Society at our school.
When we started and you all introduced each other, many of you said that your partner was interested in learning about how operations or procedures or programs worked at different schools. If you accomplished that in this activity, if you got to hear about differences among schools and how things work, raise your hand.
And I know, everybody knows about the walking in the grass thing.
Done. I can tell you, the adults in the room are over the moon at the quality of your discussion and just glancing at some of the chart paper that you've been writing on. And on Thursday, we will put all of your posters up in the room we meet in, and then as a group of adults, we're going to do a gallery walk, and we're all going to read every word you wrote, and then we're going to sit down and talk about next steps.
Because teachers always complain, like, oh, I don't have the copy budget to do that. So maybe if teachers could have a higher copy budget?
I will tell you this, and remember, I'm new, so all seven high schools are important to me. They're all the same. Your seven principals work very, very hard. The principalship is the hardest job in public education, far harder than my job.
Okay, great, thank you. We're going to, this is going to be a little bit free-flowing. These senior leaders are going to be leaving our district in less than a month, and so it gives us an opportunity to have a little bit of, maybe a dialogue and conversation with them, sort of like we did that day. But I'd like to start off with the superintendent and just let him talk a little bit about what his thoughts and goals were.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. And first of all, the Southeast Principal, Mrs. Collins, is in the audience and hosted us that day, so thank you, Ms. Collins, for letting me borrow your auditorium. And seniors, thank you for coming, because I know some of you were at prom last weekend, and you're studying for AP and IB exams, so I was just thrilled to hear that we were able to get seven of you here tonight, so thanks for doing this. Board members, the kind of inspiration for this event came in the fall, as I was getting to each, one of each high school's home football games, and made it a point to go and meet the marching band and talk with the drum majors, and the level of their responsibility struck me as really unique. And came back and thought it would be great to bring some of our student leaders together to meet each other and talk about leadership and what they're learning, but also give us feedback. And so, and so that's really, that was the inspiration for this event, and I mentioned that at the workshop where I went over my 100-day plan results, that I was hoping to do some work around student leadership before the end of the year. So this was our pilot group, and I wanted to catch our seniors before we lost their expertise. A majority of the 45-plus students in attendance have been in a School District of Manatee County school since kindergarten, so it was really exciting to get to see that, and then also to watch the students interact with each other. Southeast, of course, as the host school, was the first student group through the door, and when the students picked up their name tags, they kind of quickly looked at everyone else who was attending, and I heard one student say, I haven't seen that person since elementary school. And then another person said, oh, I've heard that name, but I've never met that person, so I'm looking forward to meeting them. And as you saw in the video, they kind of paired up randomly, and then I had them introduce each other, which of course is a great speaking and listening activity, because it's not just talking about yourself, it's about hearing who others are and recognizing their talents. So it was a great day, and board members, I know that you had an opportunity to see the posters and all the student feedback that was gathered, so I definitely want you to get to hear from these seven students who are representing the group, but the goal moving forward will be to start doing these at least quarterly and expanding beyond our high school population, because our other two levels. Because our other two levels of student leaders have lots of great information to share with us. And so we're looking forward to making this a routine in the school district of Manatee County. I'll also mention that because of the great job done by this group and the planning that went in, we've also ensured that now our Code of Conduct Committee has student representation, our Calendar Committee has student representation. And we'll be making sure that that's the case with other groups that are meeting in the future. So that, so that students are always first and foremost, when we gather as adults, to make decisions about them. So thank you all. Look forward to your comments tonight.
I wanted to, you know, give the students an opportunity to speak, you know, about what they took away from that or just their impressions of the event. But I also wanted to give you a chance, if you'd like to ask them any questions or whatever, please feel free to do so.
My first question was just going to be, what did you, and anyone can answer, can step up and answer. What did you expect, not having ever done this before, right? What did you expect it to be like? And then what was it actually like? Like, what was it, did it meet those expectations? Was it way different than what you expected? And, you know, what did you get out of it? What did you learn from that, what, four or five hours that you guys were together with other school leaders?
I thought it was going to be really serious, like, really serious. When we first entered, it just felt like it was calm and carefree. It was really conversational, to the point where I talked to everyone and I didn't feel nervous at all. I learned a lot of things, like we, most of the schools that were there, we talked about, like, we all agreed on, like, the same subjects, the topics that were discussed through the meeting. And there were a lot of different key points that I learned from each topic, which I found really satisfying. And it was just nice to get a good, ah, good view from different people. And I really enjoyed that throughout the meeting.
I thought it was gonna, I didn't really know what to expect, so I thought it was going to be more of us kind of sitting there and just a back and forth conversation for like four or five hours. So at first, I wasn't really excited for it, but then when we got there and there was like different stations, it kind of made it more fun in a way, like it made the time go by quickly. And I liked how you guys sectioned everything. We had safety and teachers and college access. So I really liked that part. And then what I learned from it was kind of what we have in, similar with other schools, I go to like a ranch. So I learned kind of maybe what we were missing out on, like the gap between different schools, but also what we all have in common. Yeah.
To be honest, I expected, or ideas and thoughts to be thrown out the door. We're students, so we're not normally, if ever, invited to those stuff. So I was very happy for the opportunity. And I was so excited that we actually could communicate with the higher-ups and we can talk about our school, like, from like student perspectives. And I am so happy we got invited back, because I never expected to be here. I thought, or as I said, I thought our ideas would be thrown out. So that's one thing I never expected, but I'm really happy about. Yeah.
Honestly, I wasn't expecting there to be food there. I thought we were, I thought that we were just going to walk in and, you know, sit down in the auditorium and start talking like she said. I didn't think that we were going to actually like connect with other students. Because like one thing I found out there is that like, between the schools, like you think like, oh, this one's better and this one's not. But I found out that like we all have like a lot of things in common, which is like crazy. And we got to relate to small things, like the parking lots and the bathrooms. So like, yeah. And I wasn't, I also wasn't expecting to come back here again either. When, when he came up to me and he was like, oh, what's your name? I wasn't expecting that. It was like, oh, me? So, yeah, it was great.
I think it was great to hear about the different, you know, things that make, you know, our county unique. So although Manatee, from my personal, is great, you know, we don't really hear about what Lakewood Ranch is doing that is different. We don't hear about Palmetto, et cetera. And to hear about, you know, if that's even the smallest things about a club that Manatee doesn't have, a person such as myself or another representative can go back to their own school and, you know, share that information to, you know, a teacher or the principal and say, hey, Lakewood Ranch is doing this, they're successful, let's implement that. So it was great to hear about the different things that each school is doing and alongside the others and what they said. You know, being in smaller groups and how it kept on getting quicker and quicker made you want, you know, have to think a little bit on your, a little bit quicker and be on your feet. And, you know, the different representatives and, you know, if that's from the school board or, you know, past students, it was great to hear from them.
Thank you, y'all. I appreciate that. I was, I got a chance to attend and it was, it was great. We had lunch together, but it was great. I thought you all, you know, collaborating together and talking and just watching and was, was really special. I think you all are definitely the future of Manatee County and wherever else you go. And I'm excited to see your future. So good luck. Yeah, other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I just want to hear, after you're done, you're going to graduate, where are you going? What are you going to do next? If you're going to college, what are you going to study?
I think we had two students that, two students, would you like to say a word? Oh, you can start us off for the college.
I'm actually not positive where I'm going yet, but I got accepted to Vanderbilt, Carnegie Mellon, and Georgia Tech. And so, we'll, we'll see, but I'm excited.
What are you interested in studying?
Nashville Vegas.
Engineering. I want to be electrical and computer engineer, so.
All right.
So I got accepted into University of Florida. And I was, I got accepted for psychology, but I was thinking of doing either pediatrician or criminology.
I got into FIU, UWF, and University of Tampa. I really want to study nursing, because I want to be a labor and delivery nurse.
I got accepted into Florida State and University of Florida, but I chose FSU, so I'm going there. And I want to study chemistry with the hopes of going to medical school and becoming a gynecologist.
I got accepted in the University of Georgia, also Florida State, and I want to study corporate law.
I'm finishing up on the last few things for the US Coast Guard Academy and I plan on doing government or marine environmental science.
I was accepted to the University of Alaska at Fairbanks. To study the homeland security and emergency management with a focus in law enforcement management.
Not expecting that. Miss Brad, Heather.
I just want to say to all of you, you would probably recommend your juniors in your schools to go through this when we do it next year. I think it would be just a demonstration of how positive the impact that you had, that your voices are heard and that the collaboration between the different schools, you all have one thing in common. You're all in Manatee County and you're sharing different ideas. And I think that's fantastic. I commend the superintendent for doing this and all the people that were there. It was pretty awesome. For my, I wasn't there, but one of here was pretty good. And that was the question I was going to ask, where are you going from here? But this is our future, everybody that's watching. This is our future. You heard all the different career paths that they'll be taking. You never know when our paths will cross again, too. So I just want to say congratulations to all of you and I look forward to seeing your futures as well.
You want to feel good about our schools. This is the reason why. And the superintendent mentioned in the video that we saw that, that district leadership would take a look at all those sheets that you all put together that day. And the next week, when we had our weekly meeting, all those sheets were up on the wall. And we did go around and take a look at them and, and we're taking those, that input very seriously. So we thank you for being here today and we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. All right? We want to get a picture with the school board in the background.
Yeah, we have not.
Okay. So y'all turn around and face the. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll say, before we get into the next, represent the reports and presentations, as I leave, I would like to thank Dr. Weisong and putting that together. I think it's fantastic and something we haven't had before. And, you know, it's funny to hear from the kids. They thought, oh, we weren't going to be taken seriously and they were. And.
And they were fun.
And it was fun. It was good.
And fun.
And, and there was lunch. There was lunch. Yeah, come on. We're going to give you something. All right, next item on the agenda, reports and presentations, CRI presentation on the medical claim payments. Mr. Smith, come on up.
Evening, everyone. Medical claims payment, this was presented to the audit committee, discussed and approved. And then Mr. Daniel and his audit report to the board commented on this report. And this was also presented at the Health Insurance Committee last week and discussed at that committee as well. So it's gone through a couple of different layers. The main objective of this report was to review medical claim payments that were made from the district's self-insured medical plan to medical providers for claims that were processed by Meritane. This was on the 2023-2024 Audit Plan. And in it, we wanted to make a selection of the ninety thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine claims for thirty-seven and a half million dollars. We looked at a sample of fifty and made sure that what was billed from Meritane actually matched the expiration of benefits that is processed and then paid to the providers through Meritane. This review did not cover where those claims properly billed on negotiated rates or what the services provided. It was more on this is what was decided or determined the billing amount was and was that paid correctly to those providers through Meritane. We didn't have any exceptions on our review of the fifty claims, making sure that process was performed. We looked at duplicate claims. One piece was making sure that there were no duplicate claim numbers, which there were not. However, in looking at the data, we did do a duplicate match, trying to focus on incurred date, employee ID, payee ID, and amount. And in that, we had five hundred and forty-seven matches. I think it was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand in claims. And in that, we obtained documentation, looked at the difference between those. And in the first round of testing, we had four out of ten were deemed duplicate for an amount of eight thousand eighty, eight hundred dollars and thirty, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Largest one being seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. We talked with Mrs. Sellers and it was decided to do the high error rate. We'd select another round of testing and those twenty resulted in matches as well. All in all, we had a total of eight that were duplicate. The total was just over ten thousand dollars. We did a percentage to show out of all those thirty-seven and a half million dollars in claims, that, that was only about point zero two six seven percent. You see in the management response, they worked with Meritane to get their responses on their process to identify duplicate claims, which was also discussed at the Health Insurance Committee. So this report is provided for your review. I don't know if you have any questions on what we tested, what the results were, or management's responses.
I don't see anyone lit up to speak.
I actually have one question. This is probably for our team. The duplicates, how were they handled? I mean. Okay. And what is the turnover for that? I mean, by the time you discovered the duplicate and then it was told to them that there's a duplicate payment, how long does it take to get that money back in?
We actually don't have the details of when they got it back, but we know within that first thirty days, they will be requesting and working with those providers together to get it back.
Okay, but the audit found the duplicate, not them or us, right? Okay. That's all I got.
All right.
No, I just like Mr. Smith to, first of all, thank you. It was a great report. I just would like you to emphasize that you are not validating whether the payment was proper, but simply validating whether there were duplicates. Is that correct?
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't looking at this person had this procedure and was that the correct amount to charge? It was more that was determined, here was the amount, and was that the amount that actually the district paid? And then as well as did they pay that amount twice? So yes, it did not cover the procedure was properly charged or legitimate. It was more the payment piece of it.
Okay. And can you speak to what is the proper method, party who is responsible for determining whether Meritane is paying the correct amount?
That's on the negotiated amounts and I believe they have people on their team that review that and Aon? With Aon.
Okay, and then they report to us? Or Aon follows up to make sure that it's correct? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next presentation is the Science Instructional Materials Adoption. Ms. Fleming?
Good evening, Chair Trow, members of the board, Superintendent Weisong. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our Science Instructional Materials Adoption. And we have concluded our committee meetings and bringing you the ranked recommendations this evening. I will take questions throughout the presentation, so if you have any questions, feel free to, to ask. So the first slide here is just aligning the work that we're doing with instructional materials to the strategic plan. And so as we review the adoption process, I just want to start with a reminder that our adoption process is heavily influenced by state statute and board policy. And so that first bullet there, where we speak about all of the options that we evaluated as a committee, were included on the Florida Department of Ed's short bid list for science. So just as a reminder, the state is currently in the adoption process for science. So they have not completed at the state level. So there is not an approved list, final list, that has been released yet. That should be released in the next probably two to four weeks. And so that's a little bit different than some of the adoptions that have been brought forward to you before. And but all of the publishers that the committee reviewed were on the short bid list. So the state does their first initial review, puts out a list that says, you know, here's who can participate in the adoption. And then we, we allowed those publishers that were interested in our adoption to come and present to the committee. They presented physical and digital copies. A reminder, our committee is made up of administrators, teachers, instructional specialists, parents, and community members. Once we did our ranked, our, our final top two choices as a committee, that was sent out to all of the instructional staff. And we had a very positive response to the survey. And we really pushed that this time, trying to get more teacher input and administrator input from the school sites. And so that we really had their voice when we came back as a committee. And so we were, we were pleased with the increase that we saw from the last adoption with, or into science. And then also, just as a reminder, all the materials have been available and continue to be available in person at the Professional Support Center and also on our district website. And then you also had access to those, excuse me, to those materials as well. Any questions on that? All right, so the next slide is just an overview of the committee ranked recommendations. So since the Florida Department of Ed has not released the final adoption list, the committee met and final, they ranked basically their top two choices for each course that we're adopting for. So for example, they are in numerical order. So for science K5, McGraw-Hill is the top choice for the K5 curriculum. So for example, they are in numerical order, so for science K5, McGraw-Hill is the top choice for the K5 curriculum. Discovery Ed is the second choice from the committee. And basically how it will work, if approved by the board, at the time that the list is published and at the time we go to purchase, we would purchase the highest ranked material. So again, for example, if McGraw-Hill for K5 science did not make the state adopted list, then we would default to discovery education. Of course, if neither publisher makes it, then that's a whole separate situation that we have to address at that time. But we're hopeful that that won't be the situation. So that is a little bit different than how we, what we did for social studies. Any questions on that?
I'm waiting till you're done and I'll ask.
Okay. So as we move through the next several slides, just highlighting some of the committee, the reasons the committee is recommending the top publisher for each course. And so for K5, again, McGraw-Hill was the number one choice. And some of the reasons, of course, we are always looking for alignment to the state standards as well as inclusion of and connections to the best standards. So the best standards for ELA and math. The McGraw-Hill also has STEAM stations for hands-on learning activities embedded in their resources. And so those are really STEAM-aligned activities that allow the students to extend their learning beyond the textbook. So they're pre-made activities that teachers can use with students to do some more hands-on learning versus just the textbook. And it follows the five E instructional model, which is really just the, it's the model that we use. Teachers sequence a lesson to allow student understanding of a concept over time. So that includes engaging, exploring, explaining, elaborating and evaluating. So those are the five Es. Access points are identified with ideas to scaffold lessons. And so again, as a reminder, access points are written for students with significant cognitive disabilities for them to access general education curriculum. And so they, they really focus on the core intent of a standard at a reduced complexity level. And so that is outlined in the resource for the teacher. There is a crosswalk and this just makes it a more valuable resource for a teacher who may be working with students on access points. For our English language learners, the WIDA can-do descriptors are identified in the resource in each lesson. And so WIDA, again, it's an assessment that we use to measure a student's development of the English language. And the can-do descriptors highlight what a language learner can do at a certain level. So it identifies the level that the student might be at and what, how they can access the curriculum at their level. And so again, it just reduces some of the burden on the teacher having to differentiate or scaffold. And it's done, it's done for them. And then finally, for elementary, one of the highlights was that the nature of science standards are embedded within each lesson. So nature of science is typically taught as an individual unit, but it's critical that it's embedded throughout the text and constantly referred back to. And so the, it was a very big highlight for our teachers and our committee that it was recognized throughout the book and not just an individual lesson. All right, so moving on to secondary. As you can see, McGraw-Hill also was for all of sixth through eighth grade, science. And then four of our courses, biology, marine science, physics and anatomy. McGraw-Hill is a publisher that our teachers are very familiar with. So they, they liked that it's a familiar format, not just for them, but also for their students. They feel like it's well organized, again, both for teachers and students. And scaffolding, you know, is provided in the teacher additions. So kind of guiding them how to gradually remove some of those supports throughout instruction to get students to the grade level standard. There's remediation tools built in that allow for the differentiation for individual students. There's authentic Spanish translation versus just Google Translate. So it's authentically translated, which we don't see very often. It integrates vocabulary that's easy to navigate and also, of course, aligned to the standards. And then a big piece for secondary is that full integration with Schoology. And McGraw-Hill includes grade passback, meaning that the teachers can grade the assignments in the platform and it passes it back for them. They don't have to do like the double entry. So that was a big positive for them. All right, so now we're moving on to chemistry. The top publisher there was National Geographic. I'm not going to repeat all of these again, but you know, again, a strong alignment to the standards and the best standards infused throughout. Chemistry relies heavily on math and they really, the committee really liked the resources that were built in to support math. So it really took maybe like preloaded the math standard in order for them to be successful on the chemistry standard. And also had a lot of additional practice, math practice problems built in. Real-world connections and career highlights that made it more relatable and relevant to the students. And they had strong supports for our English language learners. And again, the concepts are presented in a logical order, they liked the way the book flowed. Felt like it was new educator friendly and it has full integration with Schoology as well. And then SAVIS for environmental science. Again, alignment to the standards, really felt like this book was, had thorough coverage of the content. There were many visuals that were provided to engage students throughout the text. And their online platform is easy to use and navigate for teachers and students. And they just feel like overall there was user-friendly with the English language learner support in ESC students. And then also the full integration with Schoology. So next steps. After our committee meeting, the final recommendations were posted on our district website. And they've been there since then. And we are, of course, waiting for the final list from the FDAU. So somewhere along this process, we're hoping to receive that list. But there's the 30-day objection filing period after approval. And then if needed, an objection process through a hearing. And then you can, the earliest we could place the order would be May 24th of 2024. And of course, the entire timeline, as we talked about previously, was very abbreviated because our hope is that we have textbooks in hand for teachers and students when they start the school year in '24, '25. And so that's what I have for you and I'll open it for questions or comments.
Ms. Spring?
Mine was very brief. For all of the district leaders, has it ever been a challenge if there's no publisher accepted? Like a third option in your career? Have you ever seen that?
A few adoptions ago with math, there was an issue where the first list that was published included no publishers for many of the courses. But I think the state has learned their lesson from that as well because it put districts in a really tough situation. And I think they're being a little bit more proactive on their end as well in their review process. But we also have learned that, you know, if a publisher doesn't make it, the first list, they often give feedback to the publishers and then they can resubmit. And so we saw that with social studies. We saw, I think it was upwards of 10 to 12 variations of the approved adoption list over a series of time. Obviously, time is not in our favor right now, so we're hoping that that first list includes all of our top choices.
When is that list released?
Usually the end of, of the month, end of April. We saw it, I think, early May with social studies. So we're hoping in the next, you know, two to four weeks, ideally.
It's sitting on edge, isn't it?
Yes. It's us along with everyone else in the state.
Just imagine.
Yeah, this is just curiosity, didn't McGraw-Hill have a environmental science book?
Um.
It would make the top two.
I am, I would have to go back and check to see if they, if they had an environmental science, but I can't remember off the top of my head because some of them do only have certain books for certain courses.
Is there an advantage, a stronger advantage to having students go through the same publisher, you know, all the way, all of their science classes as opposed to swapping out with a different one?
So there was a lot of conversation about that in, in the secondary committee meetings. And at the end of the day, you know, so not every student in our district necessarily will take environmental science. Not every student will take chemistry, physics and anatomy. The only course we, they for sure will take will be biology. Now, we do have, you know, our progression would be that they would take environmental science and then move into biology. And so the committee did have a large conversation about, you know, does it make sense to try to look at the same publisher for both? But the end of the day, they, they really went with what was the best book for that course. And that's where, that's where their ranking showed. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to public comment since we changed that order around. So we do have two public comments this evening. Marie Masfer is first, followed by Betty Sales Rose.
First, I'd like to say thank you to Mike Barber and his staff for providing the public records request that we've put in. My name is Marie Masfer and I'm going to keep showing up until Manatee County is off the laughing list. If you did not see the State Board of Education, we were specifically mentioned. This is a quote from Chancellor Burns. Unfortunately, since that legislation passed, there had been some bad actors who in school leadership positions who have intentionally deprived students of having access to high-quality reading materials by politicizing the book review process. And as you and I both know, this happened long before Dr. Weisong and the current leadership. However, it still has not been fixed and we are still in violation of state law. Our public records actually show that there are several schools that have met as a committee without publicly noticing it and purposely avoiding sunshine. They have stated in minutes from those meetings that they are meeting together to keep out parents and community members. So once again, I'm asking to look at the instructional materials policy so that community members, whether they want a book kept or want it removed, that they actually have a chance to have a say about books that are on the shelves for their children. Also, the current, the new law that was just signed, the principals are now even more in the crosshairs because their certification is on the line. I urge you to go to the Florida Freedom to Read Project. They've actually mentioned Manatee County as our policy stands in relationship to this new law that was just signed so that our principals are actually risking more by having, by the policy as it stands. I also found out that many of our librarians are not aware of the new policy that you passed in January. That's an administrative failure. If they do not know about it, they're going down about their day-to-day business. The information is not being passed down through the administrative chain and they need that information because our libraries are still bleeding. In Manatee County, it's not the challenges, they are removing them against your policy that you adopted in January. They're removing them before a challenge even hits the door. So they, and that's what our public records show. So please inform the librarians of how things have changed since last year. Get us off of that laughing list for, because you and I, we all know that those teachers were told to cover up their classroom libraries or take them home. And still, and the narrative at the state level is that our teachers did it out of some kind of stunt or political action and it was because they were directed to by administration. Thank you.
Miss Betty Sales Rose?
Good afternoon, Superintendent and the board. First, I have two issues. First, I'm gonna talk about one, then I go to the next one. Okay, like I enjoy the leadership you all had over at Southeast High School. I think you need it for some administrators because this one thing I do not like. I do not like administrator out here gonna write up something because the sheer friend of the other person who say something and gonna write it up like a student did something which the student did not. And I'm bringing that out to you all because I'm gonna tell you something. It's my child and I'm gonna fight the balance, not with fists or anything, but with the law, with a lawyer, with this person will get this issue straight. Because I know for a fact it did not happen, but they're gonna make like it happened. And then later on, she gonna write some up, some bogus stuff. But she missing a piece of the puzzle. Whenever you bring a kid in, they gonna write their statement, right? What is statement? You lost it. So I'm just letting you all know, you need to get your administrators, and I'm talking about those assistant principals in place and learn, they here to help the student not to lie because your friends say this, you're gonna protect your friend when the friend told a lie on a student. The second one I'm gonna talk to you about, after church Sunday, we was out. I always gather out with a lot of friends and stuff. But I want to have you all send out to the parents who do not understand the just cause going to the ninth grade, how many points you need. I try my best to explain it to them because I know what you have to have the first, second, third and fourth quarter. And a lot of parents do not understand that. So I believe you all, I'm not trying to tell you all what to do, but I think the schools should send this out to the parents and let them know. Because the just cause, if you don't make those points, you coming back to that middle school till you make the points to go on to high school. And another thing, I think that the schools should let the parents know now if their kid is eligible for graduation. I don't think they should wait till the kids is practicing to pull them out of line. They should send that letter home to let them parents know what their kids need to do for they can march across that stage. And it's not been done and you all know it's not been done. They wait till the kids in line, you gotta go get something straight. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comments. So we are going to move on to our consent items this evening. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting on April 23rd, 2024.
So moved. I'll second.
You have a motion and a second on approving the consent items. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of these consent items through ID legislative in that.
I don't have them. I can leave and maybe rejoin, let me try that again. There we go.
Passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Quick on your feet there, Mr. Tatum. All right, we now are in the point of the meeting where we do have a public hearing. So I'm going to close this regular meeting of the school board. And I am now going to open the public hearing for the board. And the public hearing is for consideration to adopt and amend school board policies that we have, a board have already workshopped in previous sessions. This is a public hearing, so you do not have to sign up for any public comments. So I do want to take any public comment on the actual school board policies that are being voted on here later on in the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to come up and comment on those public policies? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting of the Manatee County School Board. And that moves us to our new business item, which is item number one, the approval to adopt the new policy and amend school board policies. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of adoption of the new policy and to amend school board policies.
So moved.
We have our motion and second, do we want to comment on any of these policies, board? Do we want any kind of review? I know we, we went over these, nothing really kind of earth-shadowing? Anybody?
Just to highlight that we did have a thorough discussion about it at a workshop.
Yep, okay. You're off the hook, Mr. Chapman. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the new policies and officially adopt them. And that passes five to zero. Item number two under new business, Superintendent Weisong?
I recommend approval of the K through 12 science instructional materials adoption committee recommendations for the 2024-25 school year.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, before voting, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Fleming and your group. I know it's an undertaking, um, in the committee and, and the teachers who volunteered, et cetera. Um, I know it's not easy on top of everything else you're doing, so really appreciate it. Um, Mr. Tatum.
Yes. And Dr. Weisong, could I ask a few questions of Mr. Jensen?
Of course.
Okay, great, thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Jensen. So when I start my comments, I, I just wanna start out with saying that everybody in the, in the system, Ms. Fleming and everybody that works on her team, I know you and I knew Dr. Weisong, you have a, a professional responsibility and that is to get us a curriculum that is aligned with the state standards of education, that is on the DOE approval list. That's the policy that we and the board have come up with. And I think you guys have done your due diligence and you've, and you've done a good job. So I just wanted to bring that all up to, Ms. Fleming, are you still here? There you go, so, okay. I, I know that, and that's your duty and you, and you've done it well. So I spent a number of hours reviewing the, the science curriculums and environmental sciences and things like that. And I, I have some concerns with specifically the environmental science, the number one environmental science curriculum and then the number two biology curriculum. I'm sorry, it's actually the number one biology curriculum. Uh, environmental sciences nine through twelve and biology nine through twelve. So without going, getting too philosophical and taking us down a rabbit trail that we don't need to go down. I'm not convinced that those two, uh, curriculums do a, a good job of what I would consider presenting a fair and balanced approach to the issues of, uh, green energy, climate change and, and those type of things. I think it's very skewed towards one side. It doesn't, uh, show a fair and balanced approach to that. And so I would just like you to address maybe what, what we could do as, because we have to get a science curriculum going and bought and have it ready for the next year. So what can, you know, we as a school system and those people in the curriculum department do to supplement our curriculum to make sure that there is a, a more fair and balanced approach? And, and just as an example of, you know, uh, this is kind of an area of study for me. Uh, you know, here's a study that says was conducted that, that shows a higher concentration of CO2 actually improves the crop yields of Japanese rice and different cult cultivators studied. Uh, there's a, a good video out there, for instance, that I think would be good in the classroom from one of the founders of Greenpeace, uh, who was actually the head of Greenpeace in Canada, who actually made the statement that, uh, the carbon dioxide that's being, that has been put into the atmosphere since the industrial revolution is actually good for the planet because it's raising the CO2 levels above some what are historically low levels of it out there. It's actually good for, for plant growth and for crop growth and things like that. So what could we do to, to provide a more fair and balanced approach that I don't really think some of these curriculums provide on that, on that subject? So I'll just open that up to you.
Thank you, sir. Um, like you said, um, honest, alignment to state standards is, is really the, the primary criteria we're looking for as we, as we look to adopt instructional materials. That's the, sort of the driving force and the thing that, um, probably has the highest weighting on whether or not we, um, are recommending particular materials. Um, and like Ms. Fleming said, obviously these, all of these materials are still under review at the state level. And so, um, as you all know, the state goes through a process, um, or they have experts across the state and, and community members across the state reviewing these materials and providing feedback, both to the state and to publishers. And so like Ms. Fleming said, the, you know, we're, we're still waiting for, for feedback and input from DOE on, on all of these materials. Um, but what Ms. Fleming and, uh, what Ms. Fleming's team does with, for example, the biology textbook is we don't just put a textbook in front of a teacher and, and say, you know, go page one and then go page two and then go page three. Um, the work really begins for them after the adoption is complete because then our instructional specialists, um, begin going through those materials, identifying the components that are aligned to those standards, helping to sequence them, helping to, um, select the, because, you know, a lot of these materials come with very robust, uh, both print and digital resources, selecting the components that, um, the teachers may find most helpful or most effective for teaching those standards. And then, of course, augmenting those, uh, materials with, with other sources, other, um, pro instructional programs and approaches and materials, um, to, to kind of create the, the district provided curriculum frameworks that teachers then use to inform their planning. So really, um, the book is the core tool of instruction, the adopted material is the core tool of instruction and then we build a curriculum around that core tool.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that and I would encourage the teachers who will be teaching this as well as the curriculum people to really try and provide a little more of a fair and balanced approach as in your supplemental items or supplemental instruction materials because, you know, it's primarily those, at least what I read and what I saw in the area of climate change, green energy and stuff. It's very skewed towards, let's go down that road, that's the way to go. And almost, almost has a propagandist type of flavor to it. But I, you know, but it present, because it's a very complicated subject. I mean, for instance, you know, the, the people who are in difficult economic circumstances in the world need clean and affordable energy that, that, and right now, green energy is not that thing. And so, you know, to get them to participate in the world economy and up their standard of living, the best thing we can do for them is get them like natural gas, which is generally clean and affordable to bring their economic status up. So that's the type of thing that, you know, as we're doing, the search for truth is really what I'm concerned about here. And as we present, you know, the next generation of leaders that are gonna be out there in our communities, I would like them to just really have a, a fair and balanced understanding of these complex issues that affect our society in major ways as we're seeing right now and around the world. And, and I would encourage you and your curriculum people as well as the teachers to supplement these curriculums, which I don't think do a really good job of providing a fair and balanced and overall truthful, I'm not saying that somebody intentionally is not being truthful, but I just think it's skewed in one direction. And I would encourage us to try and provide a more fair and balanced approach with supplemental instructional material.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members let up? So, uh, let's go ahead and vote on our approval of the K through twelve science instructional materials. Depending on the state. And that passes five to zero. Uh, item number three under new business, um, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the revision of the job description and position of manager, uh, instructional television and program, uh, and the change of title to senior producer.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. And, um, Dr. Weisong, if you wouldn't mind just elaborating a little bit?
So, board members, this is a, um, job description revision. It's a title change only, there's no fiscal impact, no change to salary. Uh, the purpose, uh, is to update the job title, um, to reflect, um, what this position is outside of a school district so that we can attract the right candidate.
Thank you. I don't see any board members let up to comment or question. So let's go ahead and vote on, uh, the approval of the revision of the job description position of manager instructional TV and program. That passes five to zero. Um, item number four under new business, uh, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you. I recommend approval of a new job description and position of van operator student transportation.
So moved.
And I know we had a, a, a very, uh, robust transportation workshop a couple of weeks ago, but, and, and some of this was discussed. But if you wanna go ahead and just so the public knows again.
Thank you, Chairman. So, uh, as we discussed, uh, at the last workshop, uh, this is an additional tool that we're adding, uh, within the transportation toolbox to try to improve system performance. And so if the board approves this job description, we'll have the opportunity, um, to advert, advertise for non-CDL drivers of small transportation vehicles that can be used by the transportation department to address complex routes where you have a, a, a single student, um, who be, uh, through Project Heart or through alternative education has to be transported. Um, and, and this, uh, helps us to avoid rerouting an entire bus, uh, in order to pick up one student. So again, this is an, an attempt to be a more nimble transportation system. And I thank, um, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Clark, Mr. Warrington for, um, collaborating to get this done. So board, if you approve the job description, uh, we've carved out, carved out the budget initially for up to five of these positions. We may fund additional, um, and then we'll be, uh, bringing you a purchase request, um, to buy the vehicles necessary to get this implemented for the start of the school year.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Frey.
I'm excited about this for one. This is gonna be a big solution, a big, uh, solution to a problem we've had for a long time. Um, I think this is gonna reduce our rate of follow backs, I can't remember what they call them. Thank you, that, that this is gonna really be implemented here. And I think that we're gonna be the beacon of how we can resolve some of these. Like Dr. Weisong said, there may be a special needs student that needs transportation. If we have this van, a non-CDL that we can use to supplement a huge bus going out there, we're, the district's actually gonna come out saving money. So I'm looking forward to this. I hope that we look at the routes because we're gonna have to do that pretty soon and start thinking about where these routes are gonna be and how they're gonna be implemented throughout our district. So I'm excited about this and I just wanna say thank you all for working, uh, so hard on getting this to us.
Mr. Tatum.
I'd like to echo what you said, Ms. Frey. This has been a, a area for improvement for a long time, but you guys are on it. And to include you, Dr. Weisong, ultimately you're responsible for this, I guess. And this will be a big bite out of the elephant, so to speak. And among other things that we're doing such as, I know we have buses stationed at out places now like at schools and I know that, uh, we have a contract coming up to provide what you call wet fueling, is that right, Mr. Rinaldi? So we're really for the, for the parents who are out there watching this and for the emails that I often get about late buses and things like that. We are really, these gentlemen here are actually making a significant effort and their staffs to, to make this work. I just have one process question maybe for Mr. Rinaldi. I'm just curious about something that came up in our board briefing and I wanted to clarify it. So when we do it, when we have a project heart, that's what it's called, transportation for, for instance, a foster child who's living in Sarasota County or something like that. Do we actually go, did you, I thought I heard you say that Sarasota County actually transports them like to the county line and then we pick them up there and so we don't go down into Sarasota County? There's like a drop off place or something or?
Depending on, uh, where, where in the county, uh, the, the child, um, is residing. We, we attempt to coordinate with them because they attempt to coordinate with us as well. So it's kind of a, a, a mutual agreement that we try to assist them if, uh, Sarasota, uh, child is, uh, is homeless and is in Manatee County and vice versa. So yeah, we, we do work with them.
And do foster children fall into that?
I don't believe so. I believe that Project Heart is homeless.
Okay, I was just curious, like we have it, let's say a foster child, you know, is going to one of our schools in Manatee County, but the foster parent is in Sarasota County or something. Do we have to go get them or do we, do you know the?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, that that's come up.
Okay, I was just curious about the process. Thank you very much for your time.
I could probably expand on that a little.
Sure, if you know, yes, please, Ms. Frey.
The goal for foster care is for the students to stay in their school so they're not disrupted throughout the year. Basically like Project Heart as well. Um, they typically will go to the school that they're zoned in and have transportation. However, if there's disruption, then they try to make accommodations for them to stay in that school. So, and I'm sure, I think they, I talked to the person in the district about foster kids and how they're transported. So they're kind of treated the same as Project Heart, but they're also in a environment where they go to the school if they're assigned, because they may not be from the same county even. So you never know. So that's basically what they do.
Great, thank you for the information, Ms. Frey.
Yep.
All right, thank you all. Um, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the new job description van operator student transportation. And that passes five to zero. And, uh, final in new business, um, item number five, uh, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the revised job description of lead guardian.
So moved.
Your motion is second and if you just wanna explain a little bit on what that, what this is, uh, is doing?
Yes, sir. Um, as our, um, school guardian program continues to expand, we, we currently have two lead guardians, uh, but they work the ten month school contract. And the reality is, um, that with all of the summer programming, uh, offered, uh, in the school district and also with the scale up and training each summer in order to be ready, uh, for August, um, that, um, contract method just results in a lot of additional non-contracted hours. Uh, and so, um, at the, um, recommendation of our, uh, chief of safety and security, Mr. D'Amico, uh, we would like to move this position to a twelve month position. So the financial impact is just the salary adjustment of the two, uh, lead guardians from ten months to twelve.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't see any board members let up to speak or comment. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the revised job description, uh, for lead guardian. And that passes five to zero. Um, moving on to item number sixteen, new business with no superintendent recommendation. Uh, board approval for the CRI medical claim payment process audit report that, uh, Mr. Smith presented to us earlier. So board, um, love to entertain a motion on that, approval?
Uh, so moved. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, board members, anybody need to speak on that? I don't see anyone let up to speak. All right, we can go ahead and vote on approval of the CRI medical claim payment record and that passes five to zero. Um, I know we're approaching the six thirty mark. We ready to just continue to move on, board? Good. Um, all right, so we're moving down to, um, instructional updates. We have no more, uh, continued public comment, information only is, is not there. So instructional update, Mr. Jensen.
Chairman Joe, board members, Superintendent Weisong, a few instructional updates. First, we have our math superstars competition, uh, this Saturday, April twenty-seventh from nine thirty to eleven thirty at MTC. The event's hosted in partnership with the American Association of University Women and we have teams of fourth and fifth graders from, um, most of our elementary schools participating this year, which is really exciting. Um, also in partnership with MEF, Lakewood Ranch High School's hosting a screening of the movie Screenagers on April thirtieth, starting at six P M. Uh, the Screenagers event is designed for families who wanna learn more about protecting their teens and the film offers solutions to parents and families on how we can help our kids navigate the digital world. So interested parents can contact, um, Lakewood Ranch for that. Um, our migrant award ceremony is this Friday, April twenty-sixth at six thirty P M at Parish Community High School. At this event, we'll, uh, honor twenty-six graduates from our high schools, um, that have parents that are migrant workers. We also have currently going on Sun Coast Remake Learning Days, which is a fifteen day festival of free events for children and families from, uh, it started Saturday, April twentieth and it runs through Saturday, May fourth in Manatee, Charlotte de Soto and Sarasota Counties. Um, we have several of our schools participating, doing festivals and educational events for families. And Sorenfor's, uh, will be hosting six remake, uh, learning events as well. So if families are interested in finding events, they can go to remakelarningdays.org/suncoast. Um, congratulations to our more than one hundred students who just returned home from the Skills USA State Conference and Competition in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, between MTC and our high school students, we had thirty-three students who won first place. Fifteen came in second and ten took, took third place. Of the fifty-eight medalists, fifty were in the college division and eight were in the high school division. And these students will be going to the national competition this summer in Atlanta, Georgia. Atlanta, Georgia. We're proud of their accomplishments and success. And then finally, I wanna say a special thank you to, uh, Bashaw Elementary, who sent me an invitation to attend their, uh, STEAM Expo, which was, uh, Thursday, um, four eighteen. I absolutely, you know, like with so many of our school events that you go to, board members, um, I was just blown away by the innovation and creativity our students displayed. I got to see a drone show, um, put on by, uh, Drone Club at the school. I got to see Music Club performing several numbers. And then they had several areas of the campus where I got to walk around and see, um, science, technology, arts, engineering, math, all on display across all the grade levels, K through five. It was just a, a wonderful family event and a celebration of so much that we do well here in Manatee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, operations, Mr. Rinaldi.
Good evening, Chairman Joe, board members, Dr. Weisong. A couple of quick updates for you. A couple of quick updates for you, human resources. We had our spring teacher paraprofessional job fair on Saturday, the 20th. We had two-hundred-and-ninety-three participants. A hundred-and-twenty-five came through the door in the first ten minutes, so I'm not sure where the fire marshal was, but it was very, very well attended. Thirty-eight offers were made. Elementary had seventeen, middle had eleven, high school had ten. We had a single paraprofessional and one clerical offer that was made as well, so it was very successful. The annual Great Florida Teach-In was a very lightly-attended event. We had four candidates that we had discussions with, no offers were made. It wasn't as robust as it has been in past years. The next job fair for the teacher and the paraprofessionals will be May 7th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, and that will be a virtual event as well, so. One of the groups that I don't give you an update on a lot is Maintenance and Operations, so I wanna tell you what they have going on. They've got a pretty busy summer scheduled right now. At this point right now, they've scheduled and they're ready to paint Mills Elementary School, Seabreeze Elementary, and Palmetto High School, so they've got some rather large projects they're getting ready to undertake over the summer. From a roofing standpoint, in addition to the $2.5 million Bay Shore project that you approved on the consent agenda, we also have projects at Freedom Elementary and Braden River High School coming up this summer. And on a regular basis, we're doing fire alarm upgrades to make sure that we're utilizing the most recent technology. King Middle School, Palmetto Elementary, Mills Elementary, and Moody Elementary will all be getting fire alarm upgrades over this summer as well. And one of the things that we can't do during the school year is flooring replacements, and we have five projects where we're gonna be replacing floors throughout the campuses. Braden River Elementary, Mills Elementary again, King Middle, Palm View, K-8, and then all of the classrooms at Willis Elementary as well, so we'll be upgrading the interior furnishing there. And boiler and HVAC projects, we have those scheduled for Buffalo Creek Middle School and Manatee High School as well, so they've got a slew of contractors working for us, as well as our staff, so they're doing a lot of coordination of those contracts, and they're buying materials right now, so it's gonna be a busy summer for them. And then, of course, food service, they always have something fun going on. They'll be celebrating Farm to School Week and Earth Day from April 22nd through April 26th. They're doing micro green kits, root vegetable grow bags, and earth boxes were given to fourteen schools. They're doing gardening journals, ruler sticks, garden curriculum, and they're working to create kale chips for the kitchen. I'm not sure how good those are, but I guess they're healthy. All schools will be celebrating the week with flour cookies as well, so they're always doing something fun. Thank you, have a good evening.
So, Mr. Rinaldi, the way you, the way you eat kale chips is you dip them in sauce, and that's what makes them taste good, right?
I'm, I'm not sure.
My wife's into whole food plant-based eating, and they're really good, but that's what you do, you can, or you put salt on them or something, right? You just dip them, and then they taste like something, so, there you go.
So, you smother them in something else?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, something else that's tasty.
And that's, you're eating healthy, but you got some taste to it, so that's how you do it. All right.
Legal update, anything?
Legal's under control. Glad to be back.
Yeah.
I'm disturbed about the young lady that wants to go to FSU instead of Florida, but maybe we can get some counseling for her. Pam's last meeting. Sorry to see you go. Do you have anything you wanna say?
I just wanna thank the superintendent for the confidence and the faith he put in me for the last eight months, and for each of you, and just the opportunity was an amazing experience. I was reflecting on the district's vision and your mission to create lifelong learners, and I feel like I've learned a lot in my eight months here, so I thank you all for that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanna start where I usually do. Board members, thank you for approving tonight's consent agenda. There were twenty items that allow us to move forward with the routine business of the district. I wanna highlight the HR agenda. Most importantly, tonight, board members, you voted to promote two of our interim principals to full principal status, so congratulations to Camon Cooper at Lee Middle School and Daniel Bradshaw at Parish Community High School. Mr. Bradshaw was appointed interim right at the end of the year, last year, by Superintendent Saunders, and then I appointed Ms. Cooper interim at Lee right before the school year started, and both have done a stellar job, so as of tomorrow, they are the full principals of those schools and will be there next year, and I thank them both for their leadership. I had also planned to highlight that this was Ms. DiAgostino's last meeting, and I have enjoyed our partnership, thank you, and certainly, Manatee County Government made a great choice for their attorney, so we wish you all the best, and I know we'll be working together on lots of projects in the future. The other item I wanna highlight is articulation agreements were approved tonight, so board, you authorized us to enter into an agreement with the University of South Florida and the State College of Florida. This is an annual, it's actually a statutory requirement that describes each institution's responsibilities related to dual enrollment, and making sure that our students have access to all of those post-secondary opportunities at no cost to families. And I wanna thank Mrs. Fleming, who, while also running two textbook adoptions, did the negotiations for the articulation agreements, and we've been talking with both institutions about how we can strengthen those relationships and provide more opportunities for students, so we'll have likely some announcements on new opportunities in the future. Board members, as we have noted a couple of times, some important steps forward tonight on transportation, in addition to the van driver program on the consent agenda, as Mr. Tatum mentioned, you approved the Contract for Fuel Delivery Services, that's gonna allow us to push more buses further north and east, and use real estate that we have to reduce the distance between drivers' home bus stops and the first stop with students, so we're hoping that, we're hoping that that will improve efficiency. We also know that we've, we've lost employees over the years who were driving from Parish all the way into town, only to get on a bus and drive back to Parish to pick up students, and so, again, we, we know that we'll be more efficient there. And finally, I wanna highlight for the public that at this Friday's workshop, we are going to have further discussion about very minor adjustments to bell times at all three levels, potentially for as early as next school year, in order to improve transportation efficiency, and so, on Friday, we're going to present you with a model for your reaction as a preview. We're only talking about five and ten-minute adjustments, and so, very, very minor things that, that may help us with service delivery on transportation. Board, also wanna make you aware that beginning May 1, we reopen the choice options for next school year. We have a statutory requirement to offer controlled, open enrollment to families, and again, the, the key word is controlled, it's not open and go anywhere you want, it's go where, go where there is space and go as long as we're in compliance with, with several provisions of statute. So, that will start May 1. There is also a hardship opportunity for families that have unique circumstances, and in a little bit of a, a process change, the principal supervisors, the executive directors at each level will be reviewing those hardship applications and making those determinations. Board members, I also wanna note that I may choose, we've not decided yet as a leadership team, but may choose to exercise some of the authority in Policy 5120 to offer, to offer, to be clear, not reassign, to offer families who are currently in over-capacity schools, a limited opportunity to move to a lesser-capacity school with transportation. So, we're still working on that, and if we decide to move forward with that, we will reach out specifically to those families that would be eligible to ask them if they're interested. And again, I, I foresee no more than, than two of those situations where we would do that, again, just exercising another tool in our toolbox to try to manage enrollment and growth in the school district. It is event season, all of you have been out, attending lots and lots of events, and I know we've all been running into each other at our schools, and, and I'm just always reminded of our principals and teachers, without them, none of these extra events are possible. Some of the things that I've been able to attend, Art Center, Manatee's exhibit of student artwork, that facility is under construction, and yet that, that group still stepped up and allowed our students to exhibit this year, and thank you to Mr. Tatum for joining me at that event. Then, last Friday, it was an honor to attend the Congressional Education Awards, along with Ms. F, Mrs. Foreman, Mrs. Messenger, Mr. Tatum. Thank you to Congressman Vern Buchanan and his team. They honored nearly two dozen of our educators who were nominated by other employees and parents for exemplary service to the school district of Manatee County, and that was definitely a fun evening. And then I just wanna echo Mr. Rinaldi's thanks to the whole team that worked on the job fair. We stopped by there last Saturday, and a great turnout, we still have lots of jobs that are open around the district. I just looked, we have a hundred-and-eighty-eight positions posted for next year, and in a variety of areas, so encourage people to take a look at, at, at all of those options, and then also had an opportunity to get to our Technology Student Association Water Tower Competition last Saturday, and to watch our elementary students engaged in, in problem-solving, including onsite, on-the-go fixes to their projects, when they didn't quite work out the way they had been designed. Again, it was just great to see our, our students in action. There are lots of opportunities for the public to attend events, and I'll just mention, we've got several athletic teams, in, in addition to baseball and softball still in season. Braden River High's Girls Flag Football Team is playing their regional semifinal game right now. They're the number-one seed, so if they win tonight, we, we get to host a regional final next week, and if they can keep that going, board members, we might get to caravan together to a state tournament, so we'll keep, keep Braden River in mind. And then, Manatee High Lacrosse is in regional action, the girls are at home Friday night at seven, and the boys are on the road Saturday night at seven for the start of their regional tournament, and again, I know we have lots of other athletes still in competition. Thank you to my leadership team, we are fanning out across all of the school SAC meetings. I've been able to go to Gullett, Southeast, and Palm View, and I'll mention the night that I had the opportunity to go to Southeast SAC's, Principal Collins and I walked over to another event she was hosting on campus, apparently a long tradition at Southeast High called the Teachers' Choice Awards, where each faculty member could honor a student who stood out for character on campus, or for some other non-academic purpose that makes the campus a little bit better, and it was neat to get to hear teachers talk about the impact that individual students had, and the students knew they were winning an award, they did not know which faculty member had selected them, and it was a, a really touching evening. Mr. Chapman and I had breakfast with a number of SAC chairs, we're continuing to work with those leaders, so that they can support their principals and appreciate them. And finally, board, we begin testing season next week, and we will be in state testing mode nearly to the end of the school year, and I just wish good luck to all of our students. We, we, we know that principals have been sending out reminders to parents about students getting a good night rest and a good breakfast in the morning. Our teachers and students have worked hard all year, and, and we know they're gonna shine on these student assessments, so good luck to everybody next week. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to our board comments, we're gonna, in order, Tatum, Foreman, Messenger, Bray, myself. So, Mr. Tatum, you're up first.
Okay. Good evening, colleagues, and whoever else is watching out there, and whoever will watch at another date and time, so I wanted to highlight again the ACE program, I had a long discussion with Mr. Myers, he mentioned that, and it's a very extensive program, to the point where they actually have safes where they lock up their tests, and all around the world, kids are taking these tests at the same time, and it's a really great opportunity, along with the IB program, and I'd like to encourage parents and teachers to think about these opportunities, because it opens up international opportunities for students to go to school. I know one of the greatest experiences I was able to have in my life is I was able to go after the Air Force Academy and spend two years in Paris and study over there, and boy, if you could do that as part of your college experience, I actually got to go to the French Air Force Academy for a semester, I mean, what a, what a great opportunity that would be, and some of these ACE programs and IB programs, if you get the certificate, you get the diploma, that opens up the opportunities for international universities and international colleges, so, parents, if you'd like to get your kids an international experience, or just people that are looking to have a little bit of an adventure, this is one way to go and help yourself along that road. So, I also ended up in, I had to drive to Tallahassee last week, and then I went down to Gainesville for the FSBA Florida School Board Association Finance Conference, and so that was a lot of driving, and, and my safety tip of the, for the week is that it's still a lot of young people out there driving very unsafe, and so, if teachers and other parents out there can keep getting that message to your kids, and if that means you have to go to YouTube and find one of those really disturbing videos that shows a crumpled car, and it says, "Three teenagers died in this crash, and look what happened to the car," then, you know, sometimes it takes that emotional shock event to, to get that point across, so, you know, if that's what we gotta do, that's what we gotta do, but one, one of them almost ran me off the road on Interstate 75, and, an area for improvement, definitely. I'd like to also echo to the teachers who won Congressman Buchanan's awards, good, good for you. Dr. Weisong, would it be possible to get a list sent out of those people? I don't remember seeing that from Mr., I'd like to just write a, maybe a little note to each one of them.
We'll be happy to do that, Mr. Tatum.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. DiAgostino, congratulations on your new position, I've also learned a lot from you, I always found you to be professional and thorough in everything that you did, so thanks for serving the Manatee County school system well, and I'm sure you'll continue your service over at the county with even better results. You're welcome. And then, yes, just a quick highlight from the FSBA conference, the state is actually trying to uncomplicate our, our financing to some degree. This is a, it's hard probably to see from cameras, but there are a lot of these buckets that you always hear us talk about, the state is, there's probably like twenty on this paper, this was from 2021, 22, I think it's been reduced down to maybe seven or eight, so they are giving us a little more local control, but we're still gonna keep working on that, as well as unfunded mandates too, which, which keep coming down, this new safety and security law is really something that, that, that will cause us some extra cost, and, and it's something that hopefully through, through our advocacy, through the FSBA and our lobbyists, that we can get that worked on, because it's taking resources away from things. I mean, if we want, if the state and our legislative leaders would like us to increase school safety, I mean, who's not for school safety, right? But please help us finance that, especially because we have like a $10 billion projected budget surplus in the state of Florida. If we wanna keep our kids safer, then please help us finance that, so we don't have to take local resources away from things like, you know, improving salaries and, and improving our schools in other ways to, to do that kinda work. And that is the end of my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Foreman?
Thank you. Yes, last week was the FSBA Finance 3.0 Forum, and they did a really, this is the third one that I've attended, and some of it, you know, like the buckets, that's, that's repetitive, you know, but it changes every year, and while we may have fewer buckets, we still have the same mandate, so it just comes out of a bigger, bigger pie, you know, so it's not, it, you know, it, it wasn't the good news that I think that we all hoped for when they, when they did some of that, but some really excellent, in-depth discussions and information about, about finance that hopefully we'll cover some of it in a, in a workshop, because I think there was some, some, some good information that probably is a board we need, we need to consider. And also, to let the- And also to let the people who did not attend know what the information that was provided. And the Congressional Awards, that was a great evening. And not only were our teachers recognized, but our support staff. And it was, it was, it was, it was good to see everybody being recognized. So thank you to Congressman Buchanan for that. And this week, at the end of the week, the migrant awards ceremony. These are, these are students whose parents are migrant workers. In other words, migrant farm workers. I know we've had some discussions and some controversy about, about immigrants, but this is not immigrants. These are migrant workers. And so, but it's, it's the most, you want to talk about, you guys haven't been to one of those yet? Bring your tissues because it is just really, really moving. The involvement of the families, the pride, the work ethic, it's just, it's, you know, this is, this is my favorite event of the year. So just to give you all an idea. So, so I encourage you to come and bring the tissues. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger.
She really pumped up that event. Now the pressure's on for the poor people that are putting it on.
Putting it on.
Oh, they know. They feel the same way.
Yeah, it is a wonderful event. I agree with you. I really only have two things. One, I know I joke a lot, but I do genuinely wish you the very best with the county. You, you will be missed for sure. So I do wish you as well as possible with the county. I mean, we're better, but whatever, it's fine, you know? And second is the Congressional Teacher Awards. I love that award just because it's so unique. Like what other award does it put the, the winner's name in Congressional Record? I just think that's such a unique award. So like I was so, I'm always, I love that award every year, but I, I agree with you. This year it was different because they included support people and I really loved that as well. And I really loved that my daughter's pre-K teacher was one of those people that got an award. That was really wonderful to be there to support her as well as everybody else. But it was just, it was a great award. It was a great event and that's, that's all I got.
Ms. Spray.
The migrant ceremony, I spoke at that last year and you're right. I didn't have a tissue with me and I should have because even being there and watching those students was just, it was hard for me even to talk without tearing up or choking up. So it is a great event. A couple of things. I wanted to recognize, my computer just went dead. Hang on one moment because I want to recognize retirement. George Shire is retiring, 36 years. I wanted to point that out. He's been instrumental to the district for a very long time and I think that he should be commended on the service that he did. And then we have a lot, we have teacher aide from Moody, 27 years. Student sports specialist, 19 years. I don't say the names because I don't want to botch them to be honest with you. And then we have others who are, have been with us for more than 10 or 12 years. We have a cafeteria worker, manager, 34.7 years that is retiring. Joyce Glosser, I'm going to try to attempt that one. I mean, that's a job that they get a lot of reward. I've been to the cafeterias and they take a lot of pride in what they do and what they do for our, our students. So I did want to point that out. Abel, cafeteria manager, 24, 25.4 years. So I just always like to look at that report to see how many years of service people have because not only are we educating kids, we have careers here as well. We do have an applicant that has submitted their resume to us to potentially become a CFAC member. I've scheduled a meeting with him next month. So we'll see how that goes. His name is Eric Silvesta. So I'm going to do that. And it's going to be a busy month for May. Senior Awards Night at Southeast and then right behind that is Senior IB Penning. So there's a lot going on in the next month. To your point, safety, be sure that you're being mindful of that. I think that's about all I've really had. I'm going to look up 5120 policy to see what the capacity is on what we do there. So I would tell the, the community that this is part of the year where it's kind of hard for the district, hard on the staff and hard on the students because a lot's going on. We've got testing. We have people that are moving from one place to another. We have to make a lot of hard decisions here. The district staff recommends some decisions. We may not, you know, you look at it both ways. I want to tell everyone out there, don't give up. We still have careers here. And we've all gotten the emails that we've read from different people who have been moved around. And I just want to say, hang in there with us. We value your service with the district. Sometimes it's not often projected from us as a board, but I want to say, me as a, as a board member, appreciate every year of service that you give to the district. We're not perfect. We all strive to be perfect, but just with the examples with the students that were here today, we do a lot of great things in our community. We have community partners that we work with. There's something for everyone. So I just want to say that. And thank you, Board, for a good, quick meeting. I'm flying out in the morning.
Good travel.
Have a great time.
I will.
Benefit of going last is that you guys have said everything I wanted to say. I will say, I will say the fourth grade speeches for this past week. And my nephew wanted me to, to, to put on a workshop and since we're talking about school times, he wants to eliminate Mondays completely from the calendar for no, so no school on Mondays. So I told him I'd bring it up. I said, I don't know what his reaction is going to be. I said, I'm not, I'm, I said, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't hate on that, on having no Mondays. But then Tuesday would be the new Monday. So, you know, what are you going to do? No, but thank you to staff for putting the meeting together. Of course, the Congressional winners, you know, congratulations on that. And the Cambridge winners, you know, it's funny, obviously, well, Ms. Messenger was maybe on the board when, when it first came around and ACE came with, with Palmetto and stuff. But you know, it, they've gone through leaders and different principals and, you know, and it's still, doesn't matter who's there and who's in leadership, it's, it's a fantastic job. And that goes to the district leadership and, and stuff. And I'm, I'm excited that we got that award for the Cambridge and the ACE programs. And it just goes to show what, what we're offering students. And I think we're a district that is offering many options and opportunities to, to students and will continue to do that and I look forward to the future. And with that, we are adjourned and we'll see you Friday.